Yeah, I can't.
Jeannie is not yet present.
Okay, so we have three. So we have a forum. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Kingston School Committee School Choice hearing. We, this meeting is being recorded by local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Okay, we'll do roll call. Michael Chican?
Here.
Sheila Vaughn?
I'm here, here.
Okay, and I am here. Oh, there we go, okay. I'm sorry, I'm struggling really bad with my audio and I apologize that I'm not there. I caught something over the weekend and I didn't want to share it with everybody this evening. Okay. Jill, does someone need to make a motion about whether or not to participate in school choice?
Yes, so the first part is the 6:00 PM school choice hearing, which you would, um, you would recognize and open. Uh, and then if there is no discussion, um, you would, regardless of whether or not there is or is not discussion about school choice, you would then, um, have a vote and then you would close the school choice hearing. Basically, you're asking the school committee to determine whether or not they would like to participate in school choice this year. They, if they don't want to participate in school choice, they will need to withdraw. They would have a vote to withdraw, um, from school choice at, you know, after conducting the hearing. And then a vote to withdraw would have to contain a reason for not participating.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the committee regarding school choice? Okay. It does not appear so. Um, Sheila or Mike, did either of you have any comments, questions, discussion regarding this?
Uh, this, this is Mike. I, um, I think just like prior years, I think we should, um, not participate in school choice. I don't think we're, we have the capacity or the infrastructure for,
I agree.
For additional students or, or anything. I think we have to make sure that we could take care of everything in our own town first, uh, before even diving into something like this. So I think we, uh, withdraw from school choice.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, um, is it a motion, motion to withdraw? So I'll make a motion to withdraw from, uh, school choice.
Saying budget concerns?
And I'll second.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. For the, for the reasons I stated due to, you know, infrastructure, budget concerns, uh, and things that we've gone over over the past couple of months.
And I'll second, Sheila.
Okay, uh, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
Michael Chican?
Yes.
And I am a yes. This will close the school choice public hearing portion of our meeting. So next up on our agenda is to hear any visitors, if we have anybody here that would like to speak tonight. Okay, meeting is done. Um, first up on our agenda, or if we want, I know Jeannie is coming, so we have approving minutes is next, but, um, we could pause that for now until she gets here.
We have, we have two representatives from, for teachers' corner, if you'd like to hear from them first. And the school committee is willing to take it out of order.
Okay. Um, would someone like to make a motion to take teachers' corner out of order?
I'll make a motion to, um, adjust the agenda and go to the teachers' corner before the approval of regular minutes.
Aye, second. Sheila?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Teachers?
Much shorter today. So, dear Kingston School Committee Administration of Families, spring is a very busy time this year at KES and KIS. Both schools just finished, um, reading incentive programs, having their spring pictures, and having great conversations with families during parent conferences. At KES, classrooms are studying life cycles of frogs, chicks, and butterflies, as well as the different habitats animals are in. The students are loving watching the different animals grow. I can say I don't really love the caterpillars in my classroom, but they're in a container and they're not gonna get out. Hopefully. At KIS, students have begun, um, taking MCAS. Different grades will be taking them on different days, but the staff and students have been working hard and preparing for these assessments all year. Many grades are preparing for upcoming shows and field trips, and the kindergartners will be kicking it off with a show starting next week.
Um, each year the KTA, um, does some type of fundraiser. Sometimes we do the movie night, or we've done bingo nights for families and things. This year we're doing a reduce, um, reuse and recycle, and it's a technology fundraiser. Um, people can bring technology, equip, use technology equipment, um, to the school's parking lot on May 10th, and for a nominal cost, they can, um, turn it in and we pay a cost to the company and get the difference. Um, so typically, and I know this was a big policy vote last month, so here I am. Um, typically, we put something in the students' backpacks to, um, to send home. So we're requesting to put something in the students' backpacks. Um, it, this isn't black and white, but it will be in green.
It didn't pass last month, so we're good.
Um, so we're requesting to put this in the students' backpacks. It will probably be a smaller, since we're gonna do it in color, half sheet, um, paper. And the prices of, of the, um, technology turn-in is on the, are on the back. And it would be one day from nine to, nine to one in the, um, front parking lot at KES.
So if somebody from the general public or myself, if somebody from the general public or myself might want to come and dispose of technology, would this be something I would bring cash, bring a check, be prepared to Venmo? What type of payment?
Good question, because we, as a fundraising committee, didn't talk about that. I think we can accept all three, because we could, we, we could do Venmo. We can do, we, you could, we could, we can accept all three because we can put it into our account too.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll add that to our flyer. So our flyer needs to be updated, if it's approved. And we would love the general public to reduce, reuse, recycle and bring it. We're trying to think of something that was not something else we're asking families to, well, that we are, but hopefully this is a helpful thing.
Right after, right after April vacation, spring cleaning, so.
That was gonna be my question, when is the event?
May 10.
May 10.
Okay, when did you, when were you looking to send flyers home?
Um, probably right before April vacation, either end of this week or beginning of next week, whichever you guys approve. If you approve.
Will you just send, will you send us the updated one?
Sure.
When you have it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I send it via email, Megan?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So we have to have a motion for, so I'll make a motion to, um, allow for the, or to have the flyer. I'll make a motion to allow for the flyer to be included in the school backpacks right before April vacation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hi Jeannie, I see you have arrived.
Sorry, I'm late, I was coming from the hilltop for photos.
That's okay. Um, we just had paused on the approval of regular minutes because we knew that you were coming.
Would you like a motion?
Uh, yes, is Sheila still here or did she?
Sheila just came in.
Hi.
Great.
Magically.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you. Yes, is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd, February 11th, and March 3rd of 2025?
So moved.
Second?
Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, do we have anybody to give a PTO report?
No.
Not officially, but the fifth grade girls and boys' nights out, um, are coming up. The RSVPs, um, are due. So if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to Brenna Litif or, um, I believe it was Sarah Ertz that's handling the girls. And then the sixth grade celebration is also underway, and that's going to be June 6th.
I think they're also looking for some new board members, because they did see,
Yes.
a flyer that they had posted on social media. So if anybody who's interested in joining, they are a good group. Okay, uh, next up we have principal reports, so Dr. Whipple.
Hi, everyone. Um, so we have, this week is pack week at KES, and what that stands for is Pack Assorted Colors for Kids Week. So Nurse Lynn and Mr. Joyce educate the kids about the importance of having a variety of fruits and vegetables, to which point I tried my first red pepper today in front of the students. I'm, I'm still here, so it's good. Um, I don't know if I'll have another one, but, um, I try to try something each day with the kids to show that even we, at 44, try new things, so. Um, so today was red, so we all wore red. Tomorrow, I believe, is tan and white, so, uh, each color's a different day. Uh, it's citizenship, a citizenship wake, citizenship week. So students will learn about how to be a good citizen in their school community. Um, since last meeting, we had our KES talent show, so special shout-out to Tony Thomas and Elizabeth O'Connor. They volunteered so many hours to get these kids ready. They were amazing. We had between a student reading, I think, a hundred maps, Ms. Pichkin? Or flags, right? Identifying a hundred different flags.
Wow.
Um, singing, dancing, piano, comedy, gymnastics. It was awesome. These kids got up there like it was their job. It was the coolest thing ever. Um, because I know I would never have done that as a child, by myself on the stage. So we're excited for this new event and looking forward to doing it every year and just having more and more students. I think some of the kids were nervous, and after they saw other kids get up there, they were talking about how they're gonna do it next year, so I was proud of them. Um, school culture survey did go out, we had 118 entries, so that's gonna help shape the school improvement plan, which I'll bring forward to school committee next month. Uh, parent input for placement has closed as well, so we're working on the placement process for incoming K to third grade. So thank you to all the families for completing those surveys. Um, teachers are working really hard during grade level meetings, staff meetings, to look at data, um, using their progress monitoring to make sure all students are growing. Um, KS yearbook, because the first year we're having yearbooks, we're really excited. So Katie Bedar is helping with that. Um, so those orders are due by April 30th, but this will be our first yearbook. Outdoor Classroom, um, I don't know if you've driven by, but it's, it's pretty exciting. It's getting up there. We have juniors that come every morning, weather-dependent, obviously, so it may not happen this week. And then the seniors come in the afternoon. It's, it's, it's pretty funny just watching it all happen, being like a bystander there with the teachers and the students. It's pretty amazing what they could do, you know? I was kinda nervous at first, but it, it was amazing. They know exactly what they're doing, and it's cool to see them work together. Um, so we're just waiting for the trestle to be delivered, because I know what that is now, and then we'll move our guns. But it's, it's a long, it's a much longer process than I ever anticipated, um, because I've never built anything but a bunk bed, so, um, this is way more complicated. Um, dismissal, so Ms. Materna and I are constantly receiving feedback, um, to help improve our processes. So recently, we shared, um, a message of families, just because we heard their feedback. We wanted to, um, make some changes, hopefully improve the process. So that's, I feel like, a process that we continue to look at and improve depending on, um, the situations. We made a change today. Yeah. Um,
You'll find out about it in about five minutes.
I do, I have to have one bus go to my butt, big bus circle, but that doesn't impact families, really. Um, so there's a ton of upcoming events this year, this time of year, and it's like hard to keep them straight. So in the newsletter, just so you guys are aware, there's a link on the first page that has all the events. So we update every day as it, as it needs to be updated with times and stuff, just because, you know, as a parent, it's really hard to keep it straight. Like, I'd be lost without my Google Calendar. Um, but that, that newsletter on that link has everything for the rest of the year. Kindergarten numbers, I believe, are up to 121 as of, um, last week. So we're getting there, much better to where we have been in the past. Um, and I think that's it. Any questions?
That was my question about the kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
And can I just clarify, um, Dr. Whipple, since you mentioned about the juniors and the seniors, that they are coming from the CTE program at the high school, just for those that might watch this back, and that's great that they were able to take on that project.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome because the kids get to see it too.
Yeah.
You know, so they get to see, like, if they decide to join CTE carpentry, or I think it gives them idea of what real life is gonna be like if you're in the CTE program in general. Um, so it's really cool to watch that happening in real time, so.
I've seen the truck there a couple times and drive by.
Yeah, it's awesome. Um, and then I think there is a donation on my agenda too, from Big Lots?
It is on.
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if that, we voted on?
Do you want to explain what it is?
Oh, sure. Um, it's, so Big Lots closed. Um, so it's just a bunch of activity books, coloring books, um, just some crafty kind of things that we can share with students, the YMCA, shelter, um, even local libraries and things like that.
I will make a motion that we accept the Big Lots donations for Kingston Elementary School.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Whipple.
Yes, Dr. Whipple.
Okay. Mr. Materna? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I would, I would like to add that for both KIS and KES, there is a flyer listed under both, um, Principal Whipple and Principal Materna's, um, agenda items. It is from the South Shore Children's Chorus for summer of two, 2025, and they would like permission for this to go out, uh, to students.
We, our policy is we don't distribute for outside of Kingston or Silver Lake towns. I thought Karen was gonna take that out, um, for that reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Materna?
Good evening, Andy Materna, principal at KIS, with my principal update. Um, I would like to remind the committee, every year we have, um, we have an MCAS questionnaire for grade four that happens after math session two, and grade five after the STE session two. Just want to remind you about that questionnaire. Students do not have to engage in that, but it is something that, that happens, uh, after they complete their MCAS. This year, we're gonna have a transition meeting. We're working on having a transition meeting for families that are transitioning from KES to KIS, grade second, grade two to grade three. Um, working with Dr. Whipple to have this, and we're scheduling it for May 6th. It'll be at KIS, and it'll be from six to seven. This will be an opportunity to meet administration, a little meet and greet with admin, and also see, uh, see the KIS building and walk around with, um, with, with the families and kinda get an idea of what KIS is like as the students are coming over. Uh, later in the year, we have the students come over. We have our whole step-up day for the students to come from KES to KIS, and they spend the morning with the third grade teachers. They get to meet some of the teachers. So this is a, kind of a, a, um, prelude to the students coming over, so they can come over with the family. So that'll be, that is slated for May 6th at KIS at six to seven. Um, it is in the newsletter, um, the monthly newsletter from KIS, but just wanted to announce it here as well, so that people are aware. Um, I want to update the committee on a water leak that we had at KIS. Back on March 3rd, we had a Univent, one of our heating systems, the pipe broke and it leaked. It was in room 218, leaked into an adjacent room next to it, and then two rooms, 116 and 117 below it. That morning, we notified the town administrator, we, who took out an insurance claim. Once we had an insurance claim, uh, number, we contacted, um, mitigation company, Blue Sky Mitigation Company, and we contacted, um, a cleaning company, Service Master. We had these rooms cleaned, we had them mitigated, and we had some, uh, all the ceiling tiles in room 116 replaced, and several ceiling tiles were placed in room 117. There has been, um, on Saturday, March 22nd, we had pipe wrap completed, uh, for the heating pipes. We had air scrubbers set up over that weekend of the 22nd, and, uh, the equipment was picked up on Monday. Uh, these classrooms have been misplaced, have been displaced from these, all the students of these classrooms have been displaced for this time, um, up through current date, in full-size classrooms, um, and we're working to get these rooms totally cleared and cleaned to get the students back into these classrooms. So again, we've worked with the town administrator, had the rooms cleaned, called the Board of Health, uh, had the Board of Health come and see the site. We've received positive feedback from the Board of Health, but, and also from the contractors. I'm bringing this up because the KTA has asked that I complete an air quality test, uh, due to concerns that their membership, um, that their membership has about the, the, the safety of these classrooms. membership, that their membership has about the, the safety of these classrooms. Any kind of air quality test is not anything that the budget was prepared to pay for. So there would be an additional cost that would be accrued for any kind of air quality test. In preliminary numbers, we speculate, or the number that we've received is about $2,500 to conduct an air quality test of these classrooms. So I am bringing it to the committee for the committee to make a decision whether to move forward with an air quality test and how that would be paid for, because it was not budgeted for.
Megan, I just have a question.
Sure.
I'm just wondering if that's standard, following a contractual, I guess, procedure that the testing is done, any other time that there's been, say, a water leak. I believe there was one a few years ago, if that's standard, that they complete an air quality test after that? And I'm just also wondering how, I guess, the displacement of classrooms has affected, like, the MCAS testing that I believe just started, or is about to go on for these grades?
So I don't know of standard practice for a situation like this. I know that from the information that I have from the, from the contractors saying that, you know, it's been professionally done, the contractors have stated that they don't see any concerns, the Board of Health expressed that they don't see any concerns, but there are, there's still a question in people's minds, I guess. So I don't know if, I don't know of the standard practice in a situation like this. As far as displacement, the two classrooms that are displaced, they have been in full-size classrooms for the time being, displacing smaller classrooms into smaller spots. The, it's 4th grade, 4th grade is slated to take the MCAS on Thursday and Friday this week, so they have yet to take the MCAS.
Okay. Thank you.
I see Stacia putting her hand up there.
Yep. If that's okay with Mr. Materna?
Yeah, sure.
I guess I only bring it up because it's not the first time over the last few years we've been asked for air quality tests, and we know that they come with a very steep cost. So I, I almost, I just don't want to hear that, because now there was an issue, now we're going to take advantage of that to ask for an air quality test, which we can't afford, so.
No, we're, and we've asked MTA to do it. They just can't do it for two weeks, so we want to be mindful that we can't displace classrooms for this amount of time. This is like a little crazy. The reason we asked for it is we have had them done in the past when we've had leaks or mold or what, things like that. The company that Mr. Materna, and Mr. Materna did a great job. I mean, they're in there right away, everything, like.
Well, that's what insurance covers.
Yes.
That's what our policy covers, which is why I'm questioning the need of a test.
So they was washed, it was cleaned, it was, but then whatever they've used for ceiling tiles, and it's giving like this off-gassing smell that for some people, ITI, sore throat, headaches, whether complaints at first. They've closed the rooms, they've opened, they've put fans on. I do think it's starting to dissipate a little bit, but it's still like for, depending on your sensitivity to that, it's very, it's a, some people, it feels like a very strong smell. I smelled it one day. I went in, Ms. Pishkin smelled it. So we've been trying to send various people in just to see, is it dissipating, is it not? And it's still there today. I, from what I heard, it's.
Well, new construction, hopefully a new construction home smells good for months.
No, this is like a different smell, but that's.
I don't know, and I guess I am coming out of, from a place of concern that it's expensive, and I know that they've been asked for various other reasons, so I would.
So this is different than the airflow report, like monitoring, like how are Univents and stuff?
Oh, I know, I know.
So this is like, this is the air quality test, and Mr. Curran can speak to it better than I can, but he's concerned about the VOCs, is that correct, Mr. Materna?
I understand that's what he's concerned. The materials that the ceiling tiles are made out of is, it depends on the type of tile used, so that was Mr. Curran's concern, and he's the one kind of monitoring the situation. And I didn't want to be able to speak, I didn't want to speak to it without smelling it myself. There is an odor. It just depends on who you are, how much it bothers you, I guess. Would you agree? Is that?
Is it the same?
Personally, I don't detect an odor, but that's, that's why we're here. You know, I'm, I'm here as an employee of the town of Kingston. This is what is being presented to me, so this is not for my decision.
To your question, yeah.
Is it the same tile that, was it like-for-like tiles that was there and they replaced it with that?
Yes. My understanding is that these tiles are the same tiles with same serial numbers from the same factory that all the other tiles in the building are from.
So it's probably unfortunately.
H.
A new car smell that doesn't smell good.
And then just one other.
I think it's the number at once, is, is, which is what makes it different, but we have had this situation in other, at other times. I wasn't the president during it, but I sat on health and safety during it. And the only room that I can think of that we've had similar issue to is actually Mrs. Pishkin's room at KIS, and that was about 10 years ago, and we had to just give time for them to off-gas, is my understanding. The problem is that displaces classrooms for, for weeks, so that's it.
This happened on March 3rd.
It's April.
It's April 7th. It's been over a month now.
It took a.
I guess my clarifying question, are you saying that the classrooms are currently displaced because the KTA requested a quality air test, or is it because of the work just being completed, or it's not done yet? Or when was the work completed that now we've put it off? Because, respectfully, I would have rather had an emergency meeting than here, that the classrooms are still displaced because of the air quality test.
This week is because of the order the week prior for work to be done, so.
Right, but if we were to approve this tonight, it's still probably not going to be done by Thursday and Friday, which is when those classes have MCAS, so.
In one room, it's not due, just due to the air, it's, they, they have no air return. The rooms, Univens are broke, is broken, and we're waiting for a block to come in. So they have no.
Room 116 is waiting to get the Univent repaired. Yes, that is a mechanical issue that doesn't bring the air into the classroom.
And no heat.
And no heat, right, so. One room is waiting for repairs. The other room, there is a concern.
All right. So I thi, did you mention that the MTA would pay for that, but that can't be done for two weeks, correct?
For two weeks, yes.
How long would it be for us to get somebody to do the airflow, the air quality test?
I would have.
Because we have a week and a half of school before.
I would have to check with Mike Lawless, but I think it would be before two weeks.
It would be. Now, if we did it, would the MTA reimburse us?
I don't know that for sure, but I can ask that question, absolutely.
Because obviously, that, you know, we don't have anything in our pocket, that'd be great.
I can, I can definitely have Mr. Curran look into that for us.
But not knowing that, I don't know if we should, if we can take a vote on that.
Can we ask our business director what we're looking at in terms of our current budget situation for the 2025 year? I mean, I guess we could get to that table until we get to that part of, part of the meeting, but.
So at this point in time, the $2,250, is that what you said, Andrew?
$2,500.
$2,500. We could absorb that into, we don't, we would have to overspend a line that, that we've currently already overspent for the sewage pump replacement.
Again, I guess can I ask another clarifying question, because this is something that apparently is due to construction? Can it not be absorbed by insurance costs?
So the, if I may, the insurance, our facilities director spoke with us and explained that they don't, won't pay for the testing, but should there be a problem like mold that requires mitigation, that would be covered. But testing is not covered under the insurance policy.
But we would have known if there was mold when they opened it up to clean it, right?
I think what there's, I think their belief is, is that there are gases from the ceiling tile that are being leaked into the room that are causing reactions by some staff members.
And, and we did have a complaint or two from parents, a student, right?
But they're not in the classrooms, though, right?
We, so we did move one class back in.
Yeah, last, last Friday, if I can get a date.
Last, so one class did go back in, and then complaints happened again. So Mr. McTern, Mr. Materna worked with us to see if we could figure out why.
Can we remove the tiles? Do the tiles have to be there? Is it just an eyesore?
Let them, let them air out for a little bit somewhere.
And use the classrooms, right?
That's what.
If, if the tiles, take the tiles out.
Right.
Instead of the quality test, like, let's go to the end of the year.
And then put them back in when we do the air quality testing, which at this point, it sounds like it'll be over April vacation if the MTA is going to pay for it.
I don't know if we have the people to do it, but.
I, we, so you guys are going to come home to a letter requesting that. We haven't had a joint health and safety meeting all year, so you're going to come home to a letter requesting that? I didn't know Mr. Materna was bringing it up today. All right, or I would have had it ahead of time, prepared for you, but I just figured we, we probably had, I, I figured you knew about it through Mr. Materna, so we should have a conversation at some point.
No, this is the first we heard of him, or at least.
So if we remove the tiles.
Mr. Materna?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just have a question, sorry. So those classes, are they, to clarify, they're still empty currently?
Yes, they are currently empty, yes.
Okay, wherever they're currently being housed, is, is it an issue to keep them there for the next two weeks? Or is that problematic for, for you or for the school?
No, I don't believe it's problematic.
Okay. I don't know what the rest of the committee's thoughts are, but if they can stay where they currently are, and the MTA will pay for the air quality testing, what are, what are other people's thoughts on, on that?
I'd be fine with that, the same way. I think I'd be in favor of what Michael suggested, which is just taking out the ceiling tiles and waiting until after the air quality test is done to put them back. But that actually probably makes more sense, as long as it's not going to be disruptive to the testing, the MCAS testing that's being done later this week.
Yeah, we can make accommodations in the current classrooms for these students to take MCAS in an appropriate setting. I think that taking the tiles out was, was going to just add a lot of extra work and a lot of extra steps. Like I said, in one classroom, every tile was replaced. In the second classroom, there was about a quarter of the tiles that were replaced.
It's not a popcorn ceiling, is it, like where you?
It's not. It's not a popcorn.
It kind of looks like that, but not really.
And it's the room with, that the Univens not working that was completely replaced, correct?
Correct.
And so the other room, we tried to move them back into and got complaints, so.
I mean, if it's not problematic to the school and there's no cost for the district for the air quality testing, I would be okay with that. I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion for anything.
I was going to say, Megan, I think the initial request was for us to conduct our own air quality test, and I think that's where the sticking point was, but if we're all in agreement to just wait two weeks, then I believe the MTA will pay for it, and then there is no cost to the district.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
If we, if they don't pay for it, then I guess it's another conversation to have, you know, to make sure that it gets done.
Or we can have an emergency meeting done online.
We could, yeah, we could have another meeting, emergencies.
Not to tell you what to, Megan, but.
But they did commit to it, right?
Yes, so Mr. Curran has the contact to them, and, and he reached out to them, and yes, I believe, he has, he's held a date, because he doesn't do any, he doesn't just, he checks with Mr. Materna before having people come to the school. And so he has held a date, so it was just a matter of whether we wanted to keep that date or move forward with our own, so. I think it's, I don't have it with me. I wasn't prepared to talk to this right now, but.
Megan, do you need a motion on that, or do we need to make a motion, which, I will make a motion that we allow the MTA to conduct an air quality test at their expense?
Oh, second, yes. I mean, I'd like to.
I know, I know, it's like.
Communicate that to the principal.
Yeah, I can, I can, Andy might even have it.
We can.
There's an email of it on there, but I don't, don't have my phone in front of me right now.
I, I just, am I just going to affect it like that?
So the information I have here is that the testing would be performed in about two weeks, and it would take another week to get results.
So possibly over the break.
I would say that would put us over vacation.
Like the end of next week, and that way, the results we're waiting for would be over April vacation, so that if everything's clear, we could be back in those rooms to start after April vacation. I can see if Joe can push it.
I think that would be ideal.
It would be, so I can, I can see if he can secure a date, like, late next week, early.
And maybe just a recommendation that we just keep the windows open, air out those classrooms over the break, so that maybe that mitigates itself.
They've been doing, they, they turn the fan, open the windows, turn the fans on. They're pushing it out every day, so, because if not, it leaks into the halls and we get complaints.
Okay, so I think we had a motion in a second, is that correct?
Okay, all in favor of that, right?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye. Okay, aye.
Great. We'll work together. Thank you.
Please keep us posted on that.
Well, yes, we'll be sure to keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Moving on with our yellow tulip project. I spoke about this back in October. We have three juniors at Silver Lake High School that are working on their junior civics project. The project aims to raise awareness about mental health and break the stigma associated with it. These students planted about 100 yellow tulips in front of KIS, and the tulips are popping. They're, yep, they're sprouting out of the ground. It's very exciting. It's really nice to look at. Ms. Mellon, our school psych, and Ms. Fitzgerald, our school adjustment counselor, is working with these three juniors on a presentation of the importance of mental wellness, which will be presented to the 6th grade students later this spring. As we move into, move on to my update, we have the dates here of Good Friday, school vacation, April 28th, 5th grade watershed field trip, April 30th, a 5th grade boys' night out. I'd also like to add to that, on April 16th is the elementary district band at KIS. That's from 6:00 to 7:00. Our MCAS dates, we have completed our ELA round of MCAS. We are moving forward with our MCAS testing for the next, for the foreseeable future anyways. I'd also like, Carrie was talking about her school council survey, KIS school council survey is also out, and if people could fill that out, we'd appreciate any feedback. It does inform our school improvement plan that will be presented next month. And that's it from KIS? Any questions?
Just one, actually, just came to me. Regarding the MCAS testing going on this week, there is enough time for the kids that get in on the buses to eat breakfast. Is that correct? I can.
Yes.
Tell my kids they can go to breakfast if they want.
They can go to breakfast, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Breakfast as usual, for sure.
Do they start right away in the morning, or is it more like 9:00 AM?
It's about 9:00. Yep. Once they get through instructions and all the manual stuff and all the protocols and stuff like that, yeah.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Got nothing going on, just quiet, is it? Quiet, huh? That's awesome.
Okay, next up, we have the financial report. Okay, next up, we have the financial report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when I put together my notes for the meeting, I take the financial report that is put in the school committee folder, and I go through it line by line, and I highlight anything that is notable in the report, and then I go to my script, my notes for the meeting, and I look through what I talked about in the last meeting, and I highlight anything that is new. And so I do have a couple paragraphs of information that I have already shared with you, and with your permission, I'd like to skip over that and only talk about two pieces of the financial report.
Absolutely, if I would be happy to, but I don't know, maybe not.
I agree. Your microphone was off, but I think we heard you.
Absolutely.
So on the, on the last page, the special ed expenditures for tuition, transportation, and contracted services, if you recall, I've said this before, that those three lines are paid out of the operating budget, the 240 grant, the IDEA grant, and the circuit breaker revolving account. And the special ed bookkeeper sent a spreadsheet updating me on that account this afternoon, and right now, those three accounts with those three expenditures has a balance available of 200, about $208,000 to get us through the end of the year. The second thing about the report that I wanted to talk about was substitutes. So I put a, and I apologize that it was last minute, but I put a graphic, I, I put a document in your school committee folders with, I forget what I called it, substitute summary, Kingston substitute summary, something like that, and I just wanted to walk through that list with you. And I want to walk you through the timeline of that list. So the FY, for the FY '24 budget, this was the budget that was created by Christine Healy, for all of the substitute lines, there was $116,512.11 budgeted. So when I started working in December, and when I first met with you at my first school committee meeting in January of 2024, I was working on the FY '25 budget, I was looking at that 116,000, I knew we had some overages, so for this year, I budgeted an additional $40,000, so I budgeted $151,868.58 for this year. Again, working through this year for the FY '26 budget process, I could see we had some increases, so this year, we budgeted 152,000 in the substitute lines. In the past three weeks, I have completed the end of year report for the Kingston Elementary Schools, and I know that our FY '24 expenditure for substitutes at the two elementary schools was $246,503. So at this time, I'd like to remind you that there was a concern with the budget, the FY '26 budget at our last meeting, and in the speech line for Kingston Intermediate School, there was an anomaly. What that anomaly was, is that there's a speech teacher at the, at Kingston Intermediate School who showed up in the budget projections twice, in the salary projections. So there was an extra $95,924 in the budget, and at this time, I'm recommending that we move that money into, that, that $94,924 into the substitute lines for next year.
Can I ask a question? Was there something major that happened in '24 over other years that we think will happen in '26 as well, so maybe we should add this additional funding into there?
No, but I have a theory. It was in '24 that we approved the long-term subs be paid at the bachelor rate. Isn't that right around that time when that happened? So instead of $106 a day, which I think at the time it was only $96 a day or something, they were being paid bachelor step one.
I'd have to look to see.
And I bet that that's why it was so grossly, not grossly overspent, because it wasn't overspent, it was just, I would argue that we probably didn't even, and that was coming off the pandemic, so there might have been more substitutes needed, but.
But this is, it's this year where we're overspent.
Right, we're currently overspent, but I think, you know, if you look at the budget there in the FY '24, where we were projected at 116 and we spent 246, that was the year that we voted that.
Right.
If someone's there for more than, I think it's two weeks or three weeks, they're being paid bachelor step one instead of the $106 a day.
Right, and I think we've had more long-term subs in the last year or two than in previous years.
We have, probably due to maternity leaves or something, right? We've had some maternity leaves, yep.
I mean, I'm fine with moving the money around, because we can always move it around, again, if we need it, I just, we definitely want to have, I mean, I was, I guess I wasn't here in '24, but, but definitely seeing that kind of, you know, that's a lot, you know, to, to try to find, you know, at the end of the year. So I think if we have it to put in there, at least as a holding pattern, I think it's important to at least have it as a holding pattern in case we need it, just, I don't want to have to find it somewhere else later.
Agreed, and right now, I think.
I agree.
If I understand correctly, Sarah's just asking that we clean up where it's at, because it's double budgeted for right now, and it could probably be better purposed in the substitute line, so.
Correct.
I will agree to that.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we moved in 91 or 92,000. $95,924 from the speech and language line to the substitute line for the FY '26 budget.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, that includes my financial report. Grants, donations, and awards, there is a $30 donation from the American Online Giving Program, I don't know anything about this generous donation.
I will make a motion that we accept the $30 from the online charitable donation.
With a second?
Is there a second?
Yes, there was a second.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll second if there was, if there was no.
And that concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, Dr. Clifford?
Okay, I have a few updates, curriculum assessment instruction updates. The first one is that on April 10th, a joint committee will present, will be presenting an update for the strategy for district improvement and achievement assessment data. And math, just to give an update on math, the K through 6 core team will be making a decision on the new K through 6 math curriculum at their meeting on April 15th, so I will report back about that and implementation. Professional development, in specifically at the high school, four teams of co-teachers will be working with a consultant at the high school around co-teaching. And the last piece I have is, right now, we have two search committees going on, one going on for the Director of Special Education, which that group has met and will be interviewing candidates this week. The second one is for the Halifax Elementary School Principalship, which that team has been formed and will be having interviews next week. So those are my quick highlights for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along tonight, all right. Dr. Prue?
So my only item, item for this evening is that we will have a joint meeting scheduled for April 10th, and will be held to review our progress as related to the Strategy for District Improvement. Both Silver Lake and the Joint Committee, Union 31, will be there, as will our.
As will our principals, I'm, I'm so sorry, as will our, as will our principals to present as well. They will also be providing you with data updates in terms of their benchmark information. Our principals will then, in our upcoming meeting, give you more detailed information as it relates to each of the grade levels at Kingston Intermediate and Kingston Elementary School, and celebrate some of their accomplishments there.
Dr. Prue, can I just, Megan, I believe you had reached out to me about this, it is definitely on April 10th, it's in our.
Yes, thank you.
On our agenda as April 17th, as dates to remember, but it's definitely April 10th.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. All right, thank you, Dr. Prue. Okay, report of standing committees, admin review.
No meeting, but I will be asking the, the chair of that committee to schedule a meeting following the April 10th presentation to begin my annual evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Bylaw. Nope? Okay, let me vary collaborative, Sheila, any updates?
I missed a meeting, but I did get the minutes.
Can you turn your mic on?
Thank you, so I, I missed a meeting, but I did get the minutes. So they're trucking along this year, you know, April's always a tough time, you know, this is when, you know, the rubber hits the road with different placements and everything. I do want to give a shout out, they were, the Pilgrim Academy was actually, because it's turning 50, collaborative, they actually were on Fox 25, which I thought was pretty cool, and so they're shouting out to the 50 years of, of the collaborative, which is amazing, so, so, you know, everything's going pretty well, so, thank you.
That's great. Awesome. All right, Union 31, we just decided we'll be meeting on the 10th?
It's definitely the 10th, and Prue's on point, and then following that is the regional meeting.
Thank you. Negotiations, we are in negotiations now with Casco?
We have a, an executive.
Can you turn your mic on?
It's on, we have an executive as well.
I can't hear you well. Sorry, I apologize for the delays on my end here. Okay, facility oversight, do we have anything?
Megan, can we go back to budget real quick?
Oh, yeah, sorry, oh, I apologize, yes.
That was approved by both the finance committee as well as the board of selectmen, is that correct? In preparation for town meeting on the 26th, our budget.
Uh, yeah, I know it was unanimously approved by the finance committee. Believe it was approved by the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, policy, Mike, I'll let you talk to this one.
All right, so we have three policies that were presented to the policy committee a few weeks ago. These three, we are looking to bypass a first read and a second read using another policy that we have that allows us to do this, which is BGB. So we do have three policies, it's a, well, actually, okay, I'll make a motion to waive the actual reading of policies JICFB, JKAA, and ACE.
Okay, Megan, can I just ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Can you explain why we're doing this before we make the motion? Just because I'm seeing the policies in here, and can you explain what the policy BGB, the authority that you're saying it's going to give us to waive the first and second reading of these?
Actually printed it out.
Thank you. And is this something that came from MASC, or is this something that was just, something that we are behind on in the district, and I don't know if anyone wants to talk to why we're doing this?
It came from the tiered focus monitoring from the Department of Education during their core program review that they conducted this year, these were things that we need to be in compliance with, so it's updating and getting into compliance with these policies.
And Mike, since these are new policies and we're not, and we're waiving the first and second reading, how are these different from our, are, do we have policies that are going to be removed, to be replaced with these policies, or are these in addition to?
No, I think the bullying prevention just has a couple of updates to a current policy.
Yeah, they do. So the bullying and prevention one has basically two different things that are updated, it's the same policy on page seven of the proposed policy student survey. The district will administer a student survey every four years to assess school climate with the prevalence, nature, and severity of bullying in schools, so that's one thing that needed to be added. The second thing that needed to be added was on page eight, problem resolution system. This is a part here where it says, any parent or guardian wishing to file a claim, concern, or seeking assistance, it explains how they can go about contacting the problem resolution system through the Department of Education, that needed to be included. So for the, for the bullying prevention intervention plan, those were the only two things that needed to be added and included, so we're seeking approval for that. And the other piece was our student restraint policy, which we updated, and it was reviewed by council, and one of the things that needed to be included in this that was important is basically on page three, and it talks about if a student is restrained for a period longer than 20 minutes, program staff shall obtain the approval of the principal, and such approval shall be based on the student's continued agitation during restraint, justifying the need for continued restraint. That needed to be included in this, in this policy. So those are things that, that when the state did our tiered focus review, they said you need to include these in these policies, and they need to be approved by the school committee, that's what we talked about at the policy subcommittee meetings.
Megan, can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Yes, I also just had a question about the third policy, and whether that, that has updates, or is that new? Because I didn't see any marking on it.
Yeah, maybe the track changes version wasn't posted, but for ACE, there was a minor update on the fourth line after programs to include school meals, and then two lines later for school meals to be added in there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Megan, I was just, in regards to student restraint, do any of our school policies, I guess this is more a question for Dr. Prue, supersede a child's IEP, like if there's a policy in there regarding restraints or anything behavioral or?
So procedural restraints are governed by state regulations, so. I'm trying to imagine a situation where there would be something particular related to restraint in a child's IEP, but it could in fact be included in an IEP, and in which case we would be obligated to follow that IEP. These are procedural, they're protocols that have, that, that meet state requirements and have also been reviewed by legal counsel, so as not to diminish student rights, but also to keep students safe from themselves and possible harm, or from other students who may be acting out in a way that isn't safe in a school setting.
Understood.
Does anybody want to make a motion regarding these policies?
I think Mike was starting to, and I interrupted him. Thanks, Mike.
So I'll make a motion to vote and waive the actual reading of policies JICFB, JKAA, and ACE, and a vote to approve in a single read per policy BGB.
Just friendly amendment, waive the first and second reading.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Is there a second?
Sheila seconded.
Sheila seconded, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then technology is our last committee, any updates there?
No, but thank you to the KFE for funding the outdoor classroom, that's great.
That will be good, okay. Unfinished business. New business.
Single signature warrants.
And, yeah, approval of bill schedule, single signature warrants.
So the meetings are currently out of sync with the town's bill schedule, on March 10th, there were 13 vouchers totaling $307,126.00. That went out digitally as a single signature warrant, and then was submitted to the town for payment. The next warrant is due to the town on April 14th, and that will also come out digitally.
Thank you.
We didn't ask you to come in.
Okay, there you go.
Lights on.
You don't, just talking.
I did not catch any of that, okay. Other matters unforeseen at time of posting. Okay, great. Okay, great. If somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session but not to return to open session, because that language didn't make its way to your agenda, so I'm just mentioning it.
I'll, I'll make a motion since, can't hear them. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session and not to return, uh, for MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiation, A for Kingston Teachers Association and Kingston Support Personnel, and executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38 S21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. And approval of executive session minutes of December 2nd, 2025, and again, not to return.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Michael Chikane?
Yes.
Jeanie Coleman?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
No.
Did you say yes?
Sheila's a yes.
I know, okay, and I am also a yes, all right. Thank you, everybody.